All this meeting to order, but the records show that the entire council is present. Also, the city administrator is present and the city clerk is recording the minutes. If you would all please join the city council in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The next item up, nothing under general, nothing under, oh, is public comment. Mr. Schamann, do you have anything associated with the school board?
People will note that in the city calendar, they have a joint workshop set up, it's still on the calendar for the 20th, meaning this Wednesday, it is not going to happen. The workshop will be on the 16th of December here in City Hall here, from what I understand, what I've just learned. So that's the 16th. There will be no workshop on this 20th. There is a school board meeting, but no workshop. Thank you. But no joint workshop, I'm sorry between.
Thank you. Kelly Archer, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My name's Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street, Chair of the HPC. I just have a question for clarification, once you get to the Historic Preservation Section F on your planning packet for tonight. When there is a motion put forward, I just want to make sure if I understand it correctly, it says I move to approve Historic Preservation Section Article 19 of the Proposed Zoning Ordinance. Will that include the amendments of 19, the new section 1912B and 1912E? Because in the draft itself, Draft Three, it doesn't reflect that language, but it does on, in your packet, on an amendment. I just want to make sure that the motion includes that 1912B and 1912E, since this is the first time we've ever gone through this process. And then if you could just give us the code of when something gets adopted. We're not used to this overdoing the whole ordinance, so when do I start using the new section, new article versus the old code? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kevin, do you have any clarification?
Sure. Ordnance is under our charter for 30 days from when they're enacted. So it'll be 30 days after, if the vote is approved tonight, it'll be 30 days from now. The question about Sections B and E, I'd have to turn to either our city planner or our Director of Planning and Development.
So Ms. Clavett, could you come forward, please?
She doesn't know what she's in here for. Maybe.
Or, I'm sorry, or Ms. Prescott, perhaps?
She doesn't know what the question was. So the question is whether or not Page 81 in the packet is part of the motion related to the Historic Preservation Commission vote or not.
Right.
I mean, this can be, we can look to address this when we get to that, when we get to the item on the agenda, maybe we can address it then.
Sure. I believe your comment is included, but yeah.
Is it included or not?
I believe it is, but I'll.
All right. Please check on that for, once Counselor Johnston makes that motion. Next up is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on accepting, on putting the consent agenda on the floor?
So moved.
So I have a motion by Counselor Mintern. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Counselor Gay. The motion is to put the consent agenda on the floor, made by Counselor Mintern, seconded by Counselor Gay. Does any counselor wish to have any item in the consent agenda removed from the consent agenda? To my right, seeing none. To my left, seeing none. So Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Mintern?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion to accept the consent agenda passes 7-0. First item up is Item A on the agenda. Counselor Archer, do you have a motion?
We do. The Code Enforcement Department uses several vehicles to get us to our inspections in the course of the day. One of those vehicles, a 2009 Ford Crown Victoria Police vehicle, has started incurring significant repair bills and needs further work, including brakes. With the addition of Irish Griffith and multifamily inspection program, as well as several additional field listers and assessing department, we find ourselves in need of one replacement vehicle and one additional staff vehicle to be shared between codes and assessing. We have priced out two vehicles as directed by the city council on 11/12/19, one 2020 all-wheel-drive Toyota Prius at $24,752 and one 2020 all-wheel-drive Toyota RAV4 at $26,357 for a total expenditure of $51,109. Revenue for permits are well ahead of projections. Total revenue as of 10/31/19 is $202,588.74, which is 56.5% of budget where we were at 33% of last fiscal year. Be it ordered, the city council approves the first reading of Budget Amendment Number Four, fiscal year 2020, and move to schedule a second and final reading for December 16, 2019. I move to approve the order.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Archer, seconded by Counselor Johnston. This would increase the budget item 10-372, or the account 10-372-50321, vehicle, staff vehicle operations, by $51,109. And it comes from the line 10-350, 3,000, account 3,000, I'm sorry, 300, 800, budgeted use of surplus. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Mintern?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. This will be scheduled for a public hearing on the sixth, second and final reading on the 16th. Do we have a, do you have a meeting on the 16th? Isn't that, yes, that's the second month, that's the 16th of December, yes.
Yep.
Next is, the next motion is Counselor Copeland.
12 School Street was purchased on August 27, 2019. This facility will be the home of a teen center on the first floor and adult and senior programming on the second floor. The Parks and Rec, the Parks and Recreation Department strive to ensure that the programs offered are for everyone, and this facility will enhance our community and programs. This facility will start out as a six-day-a-week operation with the teen program running Monday through Saturday. Senior programs will be offered during the daytime and adult programs will be offered in the evening. Once the teen center is up and running strong, we'll be, we will open the facility seven days a week. Council, city staff recommends approval. Be it ordered that the city council approves the first reading of Budget Amendment Number Five, fiscal year 2020, School Street purchase, and move to schedule a second and final reading for December 16, 2019. I move to approve the order.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Copeland, seconded by Counselor Archer. This, again, would increase the budget line, purchase of land, account 10-640, object 50409, by $242,906, and come from the budgeted use of surplus, account 10-350, object 300, 800. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Any comments to my left? Counselor Johnston?
I don't see Ryan here, but for the city administrator, at a future date, this is unrelated to the actual budget amendment, but I'm curious if we can have Ryan present an updated budget for the work that will need to be done there.
We'll be looking to bring something forward to the next council.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments to my left? Any additional to my right? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Mintern?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. Next up, Counselor Smart, do you have a motion?
Do. City of Saco's Water Resource Recovery Department recently conducted a study to evaluate improvements to the Water Resource Recovery Facility located on Front Street and adjacent to the Saco River. The study is summarized in an August 2019 report by Ty and Bond titled "Water Resource Recovery Facility Influenced Pump Station Wet Weather Treatment Improvements and Climate Adaptation Plan." The WRRF's direct proximity to the title influenced by Saco Rivers, Saco River, puts this facility at significant risk to the effect of sea level rise, as well as flooding during extreme weather events. Be it ordered that the city council authorize the city administrator to approve the Ty and Bond 30% design proposal for the sum of $280,000. This is to be funded 50% from the CSO impact fees and 50% from sewer impact fees. I move to approve the order.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Smart, seconded by Counselor Mintern, associated with the Water Resource Recovery Department, resiliency improvements. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Mintern?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. And next up is Counselor Copeland. Do you have a motion?
I'm just seeing what it's written there, no?
Oh, I'm sorry, just a second. Did you have any services? No, you are next. Item D, 54. Chapter four.
I'm doing the bookmarks since it's not.
At the June 10th workshop, members of the Coastal Waters Commission brought forward several changes to Chapter 118 that would strengthen the language in the ordinance and create a harbor master position that would be Maine Criminal Justice Academy, or MCJA, certified. Since that time, the Public Works Director, Police Chief, and Finance Director have reviewed and made additional recommended changes.
I believe you're at 118. This is on Chapter Four, which is the second and final reading.
I said 54. Good job. All right, hold on a minute. Are you going to adjust that?
It's Page 50 in the packet.
My apologies. At the June 10th workshop, members of the Coastal Waters Commission brought forward changes to Chapter Four, Article Seven, Section 39, that would establish a time limit for an appeal of a decision by the Coastal Waters Commission. Staff recommends approval. The city, the Saco City Council hereby ordains and approves the second and final reading of Amendments to Chapter Four, Administrative Code, Article Seven, Section 39. I move to approve the order.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Copeland, seconded by Counselor Mintern, on amending the Administrative Code, Article, Chapter Four, Article Seven, Section 39. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Mintern?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Aye.
This motion passes 7-0. And this will take effect in 30 days. Next up, Counselor Copeland.
At the June 10th workshop, members of the Coastal Waters Commission brought forward several changes to Chapter 118 that would strengthen the language in the ordinance and create a harbor master position that would be Maine Criminal Justice Academy certified. Since that time, the Public Works Director, Police Chief, and Finance Director have reviewed and made additional recommended changes. Staff recommends approval with further amendments. I move to approve the second and final reading of the document titled "Amendments to Chapter 118 Harbor River and Waterfront and Further amend Article 118-3 definitions harbor master, changing the words Director of Public Works to Saco Chief of Police, and further replace Chapter 118-4D governance on Doc Stewards with D Doc Stewards. There shall be a Doc Stewards from time to time. These individuals will be hired in combination with the HR Department and the facilities manager. Doc Stewards will answer to the facilities manager and receive direction from the harbor master. Doc Stewards will be responsible for the safe and orderly execution of daily operations of the year."
Second.
Counselor Copeland has made a motion, seconded by Counselor Mintern, on the second, approving the second and final reading on changes to Chapter 118, including new amendments to Definitions, Section 118-3, and to, and also to the governance of the Doc Stewards, Section, Chapter 1, yeah, Section 118-4D. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Any comments to my left? Counselor Copeland?
I would like to call our Chief of Police up and to discuss this a little bit further.
Yes, ma'am. Chief. Evening.
The, I just wanted to bring up to the council's attention, just to make sure that we're completely transparent about this, the way that it's written, in that it would be an MCJA-certified police officer as the harbor master, I would interpret that to mean that you want me to hire a police officer to do this job. Because the current harbor master is not an MCJA-certified police officer.
Right. Is it MCJA-certified harbor master or MCJA-certified?
The way that that's written is MCJA-certified police officer.
So it is a police officer, sir. One more officer.
Well, that's, therein lies the question. So I just want to make sure that.
Six months.
What's that?
Talk about how this is a six-month position, please.
Correct. So from talking to the current harbor master, this position, for the most part, is full-time for six months. So probably March through October, ballpark, March through October, it's pretty much a full-time job. The other six months, it's about five hours a week. So I just want to make sure that the council's aware that, you know, if this is something that's going to be a full-time job, that would mean another police officer and potentially based on talking to the current harbor master, he picks up lobster traps, there's people down there doing Cohogs, there's all sorts of stuff going on. I don't have a vehicle that is capable of picking up lobster traps and doing all that stuff, so.
So you're saying it's a police officer and a vehicle?
I would say a police officer and a vehicle.
In addition to what we just approved.
That's correct. So I just want to make sure that.
So I would suggest that we table this for now, so we can further review this and get our heads wrapped around the financial implications here. I move to table this.
Let me, yes, so you want to discuss the tabling motion. Okay, yeah, so I have a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion to table by Counselor Copeland, seconded by Counselor Gay. Any comments to my left?
It's a motion to table.
Oh, it's a motion to table?
No, no comments.
And it's not, it's not debatable. Okay, so.
I just was curious if you, do you lose certification as a police officer? So could you hire a former police officer that's now retired?
I, yeah, I mean, I could find somebody.
Vote not to table it.
It would have to be somebody that could be re-certified, yes. There's a, the process to go through that, but.
Yeah, through the, right.
Yes.
So it's, that would probably be better suited for.
So we have a motion to table, and this will be discussed at a later time. So the motion to table, we'll take it off the table on December 16th, so.
Can we workshop it?
Certainly can. So the motion to table, it comes off the table on December 16th, so.
And at that point, the police chief can give us some more firm numbers?
Presumably on the 9th, it would get worked up. It depends on the new council, the new mayor. But that, at that point, it could be worked up for discussion and then come before the council in its next scheduled meeting after the workshop, which would be the 16th of December.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
The problem is, is the timing for an ordinance change will be too far from the public hearing, so you'd have to go through this whole process anyway. So tabling the item isn't, doesn't make sense. You can vote it down, the new council will be coming in, and they can take it back up as a new item.
Sure. So can I get a second, withdraw a second?
Yes, sir.
Can I get you to withdraw your tabling motion?
Withdrawn.
So at this point, we're voting on the motion. So Counselor Johnston? Counselor Smart?
No.
Counselor Mintern?
No.
Counselor Copeland?
No.
Counselor Doyle?
No.
Counselor Gay?
No.
And Counselor Archer?
No.
The motion fails 0-7. Thank you very much. Next up, Counselor Johnston, do you have a motion?
Has written in detail in the background of the city council item commentary on the second and final reading, vote on Historic Preservation Section Article 19, this abbreviated and excerpted section will be read from the background of the complete item commentary. Background beginning with, on February 20, 2018, the city council voted to adopt the 2018 update of Saco's Comprehensive Plan. 2018 Comp Plan update was the result of nearly two years of review and discussion by the Ad-Hoc Committee and the city staff. Community's next step was to update the zoning ordinances to align with the city's land use vision. The most forward-thinking land use policies in the state of Maine ensures financial stability, environmental sustainability, and provides opportunities and accessibility to all. Continuing the background through the following excerpts, the Draft Three of the zoning ordinances then went to Planning Board public hearing on October 22, 2019, where over 50 people attended and provided valuable input, valid concerns, and comments. The Historic Preservation Commission held a public hearing on October 22, where several people attended. The Planning Board continued the zoning ordinances discussion at their October 29 meeting, heard additional public comments, and approved a draft report to go to the city council for acceptance the same evening as the public hearing to be held at the city council meeting on November 4, 2019. At that October 29 meeting, the Planning Board directed staff to review the new recommendations for revisions and report back to the Planning Board at their November 5, 2019 meeting. The city council held a public hearing for the proposed revised zoning ordinances on November 4, 2019. After the public hearing was closed, the city council voted to refer the zoning site plan and subdivision ordinances and the zoning map back to the Planning Board. The city council moved to send the Historic Preservation Section of the zoning ordinance that received a positive recommendation from the Planning Board to the second and final reading and vote for approval, and to set that date for November 18, 2019. The third draft, the proposed land use ordinances are available and contain Historic Preservation, Historic Preservation Section Article 19 of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the city council approve the Historic Preservation Section Article 19 of the proposed zoning. I move to approve Historic Preservation Section Article 19 of the proposed zoning ordinance.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Smart, seconded by Counselor, I'm just, a motion by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Smart, and before we go any further, so Ms. Clavett or Ms. Prescott, you want to answer the question that came up earlier, associated with Section 19, or chapter?
Article 19.
Article 19, Section 12?
Article 19.
Yeah. Section.
Question is 19, 1912.
1912, so 12A and B.
All of the information has been updated and corrected and is part of the packet. Yes.
So that is, so it is there as part of that packet?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I see none, but let me ask the council, any questions for planning? To my left, any questions for planning? To my right, seeing none. To my right, seeing none. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments to my right on adopting Article 19 of the, of the code? Is there a modification? Any to my left? Seeing none. We're looking at the adoption of Article 19. Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Gay.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn.
Yes.
Counselor Smart.
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. This was the second and final reading, and so that is adopted. Next up is the administrative update. Mr. Sutherland.
So, two items looking forward. The inauguration is December 2nd at 6:30 at Thornton Academy. A lot of the details are following, and we'll be sending out a save the date, ideally tomorrow, with an invite and also some Facebook invitations to the public. We'll be providing all that information for the councils to send out to their respective constituents, friends and family. I also, given that this is the final meeting of this council with action items, I wanted to identify several of the things that this group has accomplished, and you should be very proud of yourself. I've broken them into a couple of categories. I call it brokering real estate. So, we sold Lot 14 in Spring Hill Industrial Park. We also sold in the Millbrook Business Park, Lot 3, 4, 7, and 9. So, five parcels that the city owned have been sold off for business development. We purchased land to create a new business park, because there are only two more spots that remain in Millbrook. We purchased land for a public works facility, and with that will come additional business park locations. And we also purchased, just tonight, we moved the money to purchase the downtown parcel for the teen center, an additional programming space for Parks and Rec. We built stronger teams. We confirmed the appointment of Ryan Summer as Director of Parks and Recreation and Jack Clements as the Chief of Police. And while in office, we've seen some of the transitions in administrative functions, such as the Director of Planning and Development and City Planner, and the creation of a Communications Director position. This council has also approved six union contracts, in fact, seven, because we did the fire twice. So, that is a very time-consuming endeavor, and I'm, I'm very proud of this group for working through those. I think it'll be the next council that gets to go through it again, so, look forward to that. Welcoming businesses, we had contract zone amendment and expansion for the Ecology School on Simpson Road. We had amendments to MU 3, I-1, I-2, and I-3 to accommodate businesses like Ready Seafood. We've amended all seven TIF districts to optimize their use, and we created a new one to assist Ready Seafood and to pay for the sewer debt along Route 1. Modified the role of the Economic Development Commission and strengthened its, its role in assisting staff for reaching economic development goals by amending the ordinance that governs the committee. And we paved the way with amendments to, extensions to, and/or creations of contract zones with the hope that they will go away with the update to the zoning, should be in front of the next council in due time, for Convenient MD, Hancock Lumber, and Bedford-Saco Dental Associates. We've protected Saco, updates to the city charter to create greater clarity, gender neutrality, and staggering the council terms. Two years of budgets with a flat tax rate. Update to the single-use bag ordinance. The beach management agreement and updates to city codes allowing for the placement of dredged sand from the Saco River onto the Camp Ellis Beach. We've had the blasting ordinance. We've enhanced the seniors citizen tax relief program, and we've even created an ordinance for tobacco, tobacco-free zones. And tonight, I had hoped we would have moved forward with the Harbor River and water ordinance, waterfront ordinance, but we'll bring that to the next council. Those are the items I was able to pull together. I, there was a lot more that this council has accomplished, but I think those are really some overarching things that this group has achieved, and you should be very proud of yourselves. So, thank you for your service.
So, any comments on the administrative update? To my right, to my left, seeing none. Ms. Hughes, on, in the matter of Chapter 118, Counselor Johnston was making a point of information, and that Mr. Sutherland was making a point of clarification. And so, that's how that motion to table got resolved. Then next up is council discussion and comment. Any council discussion, Counselor Gay, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure this is being televised. I had a couple constituents call me about last week's not being televised.
I haven't seen Andrew, is he here today?
He's here.
Yes, okay, good.
I believe last week was a workshop?
And last week was a workshop.
Excuse me? There was a special meeting?
There was a special meeting, that's true. And that wasn't televised.
That's right.
Any other comments to my right? Counselor Archer.
Yes, as the last meeting of the council, I just want to say thank you to the mayor, Counselor, where is he at? Counselor Smart and Counselor Gay for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments to my right, seeing none?
And since I have a floor still. Just, I have to say, it's the 90th birthday of both Mickey and Minnie Mouse.
That's exactly right, yes, it is. And to my left, council comment discussion, any comment or discussion to my left? Counselor Smart.
I, I just wanted to say, I saw somebody moving up there behind the window, so.
Oh, okay.
And I think they were giving a thumbs up, so I think we are recording, and, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody again for this opportunity. It's been a wonderful pleasure.
And enlightening. Okay. And I want to, and I would like to recognize the city staff that is, is here this evening in addition to Mr. Sutherland and Ms. Hughes. We have the Director of Economic Development and Planning, Ms. Clavett, Mr. Fox, the Director of Public Works, the Fire Chief, Chief DeRoz, the Deputy Police Chief, Mr. Huntress, our Planner, Ms. Prescott, our Water Resource Recovery Department Head, Mr. Carter, our Code Enforcement Department Head, Mr. Lambert, and our Finance Director, Ms. Salas. Thank you all for being here. Next is going into executive session, and before we do that, let's have a, a brief recess, and then we'll go in with Attorney McGill. So, we're in recess for five minutes.
Call, motion first?
I'm sorry?
Can you put the motion up?
Oh, motion to go into recess? Oh, oh, to go into executive session? Yes. So, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor, be it ordered the City Council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title on Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405, 6A, City Administrator search.
No, it's actually 6C, it's a, it's a contract negotiation. We're not going to talk about Mr. Sutherland, who is an employee, A covers employee, C is contract negotiation.
Error in the agenda.
Exactly right. So, do I have a motion to go into executive session under sub-paragraph C?
So moved.
Thank you very much. I have a motion by Counselor Menthorn, seconded by Counselor Johnston, to go into executive session under contract negotiation. Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Gay.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn.
Yes.
Counselor Smart.
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
We're now in executive session.[1148.66]
The meeting back to order. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes, be it ordered City Council exit executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056c, contract negotiation.
Second by Councilor Copeland. Do I have a motion by Councilor Minter and second by Councilor Copeland to come out of executive session. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Any to my left? Seeing none. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minter?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. We're now out of executive session. Do I have a report?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Agreed.
So I have a motion by Councilor Minter and second by Councilor Gay to adjourn. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minter?
Yes.
Councilor Smart and Councilor Johnston. The motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned.